Good chilly December evening, everyone. The December 8th, 2020 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Dr. Gullett, would you be so kind to read our statement this evening?
It would be my pleasure, thank you. We are the Marion County School District Governance Team. If we chose one word to describe us, it would be student first, because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board, we have experienced several losses since we were together last, and at this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Cummings if he would please lead us in a moment of silence?
Yeah, we've had several staff members that have passed because of various reasons, and a student recently, so let's ask that we have a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Gullett?
Chair, through our members of the board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 8th, 2020, School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of Item D 22.1 that has been placed under discussion.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Moved by Cummings.
Second.
Second by King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 13th, 2020, School Board Meeting?
Senator.
Moved by McCall. Second by Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22nd, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by King.
Second.
Second by McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board meeting tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter related to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order received by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and provanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, do we have any speakers tonight?
We do. Scott Carpenter.
Good evening. Scott Carpenter, Nine Concourse Trail, Florida. Carpenter, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. Chairwoman, Mrs. Thoreau. Last chair, Mrs. King. Dr. Gullett, board. This is going to be hard, so please forgive me. A lot of people aren't going to understand it. I have no agenda. I was going to come in here wearing a mask, an N95 mask, a face shield, a head wrap, a gown, maybe a jacket, and gloves. That represents the compassion that people represented in taking care of my wife. They didn't care what they looked like. They didn't care how difficult it was. They did it because not only was it the right thing to do, because they have to go home, but they did it to even continue to protect my wife. I did lose my wife to COVID. This is what this conversation is going to be about. I had to write some things down because I normally forget my place. The pain is real. There's always going to be a void that I cannot fill. I've thought about what I would say tonight for a while. I've been trying to make sense of this whole thing, and in my human brain, I can't. So many have lost a friend, a cousin, a sister, an aunt, a daughter, a mother, but I lost my wife. I lost a brother at 27. I lost my parents. I've lost my two best friends from high school. You can add that all up together, and it doesn't even compare. I woke up every morning next to her. I did them with them. Where my vows said two become one, we did. I had to understand this even more, how blessed I was to say that I had my soulmate. She gave me three beautiful children, and she loved me unconditionally. A lot of people cannot even say that. We had to postpone the memorial this past weekend due to the fact that one of my children tested positive with COVID. COVID's really been attacking my family hard, but it will not win, I can promise you. So why am I here? I'm here to say a big, huge, gigantic thank you. Thank you to the Marion County Public School System. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Thank you, Mark. Mr. Viannella. And I got to say a special thank you to the board and most of all, to Marion Technical College. I've been in education for 27 years, and we've lost a lot of people through the years, including students, and once too many. I've experienced a lot of outpouring of support before, but I've never experienced what I've experienced over the last six weeks. Whenever you turn on the news at night and you listen to all the junk that's there, don't believe it. People are good. Look around. I work in that environment every day. People are good. So yes, a big thank you is necessary, and it's not even close to enough. You didn't even know my wife, and you loved that way. That's not what you hear anymore. You hear all the other stuff. The teachers, the students, and the parents, they all had concerns coming into COVID at the beginning of the year, and I can only imagine what you faced as a new superintendent coming in, and I know what you faced having to get ready for this school year. No one knew, and I don't know that we still know, but I do know this. Decisions were made, tough, hard decisions of what you were going to do for students and staff. I heard the comments. It's still no one knew. To my knowledge, to my knowledge, and I got to preface this again, to my knowledge, I don't know of any of our staff members or students that have been hospitalized. That doesn't mean that they have and don't know, but from my standpoint, I don't know of any. Does this mask guarantee anything? No. I can promise you that. My wife was a health care worker. She wore the mask, she wore the face shield, she did everything that she was supposed to do, but they had a patient that was not screened. Can't prove that, doesn't matter. At the end of the day, it just doesn't matter. The teachers and the students have done a phenomenal job handling this situation. Who would have ever known we were going to go to school one day wearing a mask? When you were going to walk into an establishment, wearing a mask? But that's our new norm. And so if it's our new norm, and if I got to wear this to hug your neck, I promise you, you're going to get a hug. I promise you, I'm showing up. I'm going to respect what I have to respect to not only protect myself, but to protect you. It's not easy. Go look at those nurses that show up every day. That's what they live. And then I've had people say, oh, you're one of them. Yeah, I am. My wife is part of the 1% mortality rate. That's 100% to me and my family. So yeah, I'm one of them, and I'm very proud to say that I'm one of them, because if I get the opportunity to still be around my family and my friends and my coworkers because I got to wear a mask, absolutely, I'm going to wear that mask. Why would we not? I don't get that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is we're going into the holiday season. We know that people are going to go celebrate, and absolutely, you should, because you're not promised tomorrow. You go celebrate, and you love your family. We've got to be smart coming back. When we get back to school, we cannot get lax. We can't take it for granted. We've got to stay the course. We're so close to a vaccine that they're saying is going to work, and of course, the timing of it couldn't have been worse for me. That's okay, because somebody else is going to, they're going to do well by it. And I'm okay with that, because that'll be something that she can go back and she can say that I still forgive those that still choose to call you one of them. That's who my wife was. The mask you're seeing me wear and this, though, and I've given to each board member, Dr. Gullett, and Mr. Powers, and Ms. Martinez, nurses came up with this idea. My wife was adopted, so she is an advocate for life. They took their money, their time, and they developed these masks. My wife had a saying, "We thought we were having fun, but we were making memories." It means a whole lot more to me now. And so that's why you've got that mask. There's a memory to be made every day, and I just encourage you, don't take it for granted. COVID is real. I don't care what people say, I'm living it. But if one person, one, can come through this and learn something because they protected somebody else, what's one life worth? They became a millionaire right then. If I had $10 million, I'd give it to you right now to get my wife back. She wouldn't come back here. She's where I want to be. It's where a lot of us are trying to get to. So I'm good, I'm sad, I'm selfish, but I'm good. I know where she's at. But I can't not allow myself, and I know I've got a voice, to let other people know this mask will help. It will help, if anything, to let you know that I respect you, and I love you enough to respect you. And if we all will do that, we've got a much better world to live in right now. That's why I'm here. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you did for my family, someone you didn't even know. And this entire school system did something that's just unbelievable. You love people you didn't even know. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach Carpenter. Took everything you had to come up here, and it took everything we had to hear you through. I never had the pleasure of getting to know your wife, but I've certainly had the pleasure of knowing you all these years.
I'm married, I'll let you go. I'm proud.
And Scott, let me say this. This virus is tough, and it's hit you directly. And so you have our prayers. Believe that, you have our prayers. And nothing can replace your wife, but the one thing that I heard you just say was the memories. You've got memories. So our deepest condolences to you and your family, and we are still a family. Marion County Schools District is a family, and that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to look out. And thank you for reminding the public that this mask should not be politicized, it should just be about respect for everybody else. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Scott.
And Scott, I do have a Tony memory, and it's at Chick-fil-A in church. And you are absolutely correct. She's where she wants to be, and thank you for reminding our district how important this mask is.
Thank you all for making the decisions that you did.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Avery.
Let me spray down. I may. After that conversation, right? Well, I can wipe and talk. My name is Mark Avery. I'm the president of the Marion Education Association. I reside at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472, and you spell my last name A-V-E-R-Y. And I came here tonight to be here, to make sure I'm present at the meetings, because I think that's important, that we're all present here. And I had no idea that Mr. Carpenter was going to come talk. But one of the things I wanted to talk about was our COVID precautions and the rules that we set forth back in the summer that possibly we have started to look away from. And I wanted to remind us not to look away from them, as cases around the country and our state and our community are increasing. And I say this because all through the spring and the whole summer and even two weeks ago at the Governor and Commissioner's Emergency Meeting, and they gave their declaration of what they do in the spring, they said that a teacher needs to be in front of students, that that was the number one thing, and that's what we focused on all summer. How do we get teachers in front of students? Not what they do there, because they're professionals, and we should have the confidence that they're going to do the best job they can, but we have tended to overlook where that safety aspect was, because we set up parameters in the beginning. We made documents and said, all the desks will be faced forward. You walk in classrooms now, they're not. That the desks would be separated apart, and there's desks that are, the kids are sitting in groups of four, and groups of four. And I understand now that as more kids come back, that we have an issue with space. I know that. But have we looked at unique ways to try to address that space? Because we had issues with space before the students came back. And the commissioner even said, stand in the front of the room and teach. That's not what I've been hearing. Small group instruction, move around the room. We post pictures of kids working together in groups. I understand that that is conducive to learning, but our job, our teacher ethics say that when a student's in my classroom, it's my job to protect them, as if I'm their parent, in loco parentis. It's in our code of conduct, it's in our student handbook. So if I separate them and make them as safe as I can, and then I say, oh, wait, you get up and go work in this small group, because now I'm going to jeopardize your safety, that goes against what I'm supposed to be doing. I'm supposed to provide them the best education I can within the parameters that I'm given. COVID safety should be our number one priority, to take care of our students, to take care of our staff. I literally was told from a school that they were told, you will do small group instruction 20 minutes daily, and if somebody gets sick, well, just quarantine the whole class. That shouldn't be happening. That should not be. The whole school has verified this, and I don't understand why we would let that happen. So I will get off of that box and mention one other thing. We had a board hearing about teacher salary allocation. I would like you to know that the veteran teachers are very disappointed that we didn't do more. We have recently learned from the Governor and the Commissioner that the sky is not falling, and that we're not going to be in as dire straits as we have been predicting, and that if we are missing students, they're not going to make us suffer individually, that they're going to divide it amongst the different counties. I know that's part of the plan also. So hopefully, we keep that in mind, and maybe we follow through with what we heard that night about revisiting some of that and make the veteran teachers happy. And on a positive note, because we've got to have some of those, my daughter, who is a product of Marion County School System and who graduated from the IB program at Lakeview High School in 2017, graduates from college in a week, and so does her spouse, and she was also a graduate from the IB program at Lakeview. So they both will be graduating the end of next week. So our system does work when we allow it. And thank you for your time, and I want to wish everybody happy holidays to the best that you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. And your remarks do come at just the right time. It continues to be on all of our minds. We can't be lax. COVID-19 is real, and we have to continue pulling together to get through this. We're very close to the finish line. The vaccine is starting to be distributed. I am right in the same wheelhouse as you are, Board Member Cummings, that none of this should be politicized. If the vaccine can be effective and save lives and help get us back to normal, then it's something that's very important to consider on an individual basis. So speaking on behalf of the board, our agenda remains clear, and that's to keep everyone as safe as possible, continue to mitigate risk, and we will be able to do that with everyone doing their part. So thank you again for coming forward and reminding us, and congratulations to your kid. That's a milestone.
Say something, Chair.
Yes.
I don't want us to move too fast, because he said something about how these classrooms and instructions is being dispensed. He still back there?
Yes.
You said that they have moved away from the safety protocols that we, that we as a district agreed to do, because I hope that's not the case. We're too close to coming out of this thing to get lax and have some major setbacks.
There are definitely schools, some schools that never even followed them, and other schools that after a month or two started moving their desk arrangements, and the specific instance about the small group instruction came within the last month.
So Mark and Dr. Gullett, can y'all look into that? Because why would we set a policy or procedure and then violate our own policy procedure? It was for safety. We met, we delayed the start of school to make sure that we had certain things in place so that that would not be the case. We knew that at some point, kids would start coming back to school. At least, we hoped that. And we need to make sure that they're still following that until we come out of this thing completely. We need to make sure those safety protocols that this board, minus Mr. Campbell, but this board did say that we would keep in place. And so I haven't heard that we can go back to normal. Anybody else heard that? Because if we haven't...
And what I would suggest, Reverend Cummings, Mr. Avery, if you know the names of those schools, if you'll get with Dr. Gullett, I mean, me just hearing a school or some schools, that's like hearsay to me, but if you know the names of the schools, then you need to get that information to Dr. Gullett so that we can have it investigated.
And please, any teacher, principal, school, y'all hear what we're saying right there. Please do not violate. This is a safety issue, and it's hitting home, it's hitting closer and closer to home every day. So please, don't violate that one.
In that same vein, I am interested to know how many students we know are coming back based off of their preferences, that their parents have chosen. How many students are we expecting back after Christmas break? And I know that that's a little bit delayed now. The semester doesn't end until two weeks after Christmas break, but there are numbers that we know are coming back. And so what does that look like? I'm sure you all have plans in place. We haven't heard those, I haven't heard those plans yet, to know how we're shifting online instruction to, you know, maybe one teacher per two schools, or however we're having to do that based on keeping our kids as socially distanced as possible in the classrooms.
Chair, through our members of the board, absolutely, our expectations, my expectations, along with you as a governance team, have not changed at all. So I'm quite surprised to hear this and would appreciate the opportunity, and I hope the union always knows that they need to communicate with us. We're happy to address and want to address these things. We do not want these to occur in our school, so we want to get some more information about that. Also, to Board Member Campbell's question about students coming back, yes, we're doing the surveys, and as soon as we have that information, and we know that we'll have some adjustments, and I'll speak in a bit about the emergency order that we will provide information to you about our current numbers coming back for a second semester and what that looks like.
Thank you.
Mrs. Thoreau, if I may, one more comment. Mr. Avery, I don't think you have to wait to get in, at a school board meeting or workshop to get it a microphone to contact Dr. Gullett if you're hearing things, please.
Please.
That's something that's really important to keep in our, in our, at the forefront is that what has gotten us this far is working together and continuing to build on that trust. And I saw as information was being shared, you know, Dr. Gullett, you were writing and I have no doubts because that's become the norm is that when there is a concern raised or information is shared, it is followed up on, you know, very quickly. And in the end, we have 43,000 students, 7,000 employees. It's up to every single one of us to do the right thing. And if they're feeling for whatever reason that not doing the right thing is being offered up as even a suggestion, then that's got to be conveyed. We are too close to the finish line now, to stop now. And so we won't.
I think what's being described is probably what we've been hearing a lot of is the COVID fatigue. But I think it's been addressed very well tonight that we stand by our policies that were made and our number one priority is the safety and well-being of each and every student and every one of our employees. So, you know, I was going to talk about that a little bit at the end, but.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C 6.1 through C 20.1 with the exception of D 22.1 that is under discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Cummings. Seconded by Campbell. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the agreement of online learning management system with Instructure Inc., otherwise known as Canvas? So moved. Moved by Campbell.
And I have some discussion regarding that item.
Oh, that's right. We need to have discussion. First off, sorry.
I think we need a second and then discussion.
Okay, second?
So I second.
Second by McCall. So moved by Campbell, seconded by McCall. Discussion?
As to agenda item 22.1, this is the Canvas Instructure. I have had conversations with Mr. Vianello, along with our IT department regarding this. I've spoken with you, Ms. Throer. I've also spoken with everyone that I know that has had a stake in this so that I can come to the best conclusions I can as to where we need to proceed. I have also, in that vein, also looked for solutions as to how we make this work. I strongly recommend that the school board not approve Instructure's First Amendment besides being approved, besides not being approved to legal form. In reviewing this material before I came here, I noticed that the First Amendment contains a reference to Exhibit B as an invoice. But Exhibit B in the body of the original agreement is the district's insurance requirements. This error should not be overlooked and could cause contractual problems later. So you're aware, back in September 2020, the vendor altered the district's template agreement without redlining, without permission from Attorney Green at the time. And as a result, the contract was not approved to legal form. Since the dollar amount was below the threshold at that time, some $5,000, the initial agreement was reasonably entered into by the superintendent and the former school board chair. Now, the parties want to expand the purchase of the software to $757,000. However, since the original contract was not approved to legal form, the First Amendment can't be approved to legal form. Equally important, now that we're reaching new spending threshold limits with this vendor, I have significant concerns with what the vendor omitted from the original agreement. Therefore, tonight, I recommend that you provide me time to speak with the vendor's legal counsel so that we can try to correct the areas of most concern and get a First Amendment draft that is in best interest of the school board. The vendor, this vendor has cooperated with other Florida school districts in doing exactly that. I would also like to recommend, in order to prevent delaying the purchase of this needed software, that once I have negotiated a more mutual First Amendment between the parties, that the school board authorize Dr. Gullett and the school board chair to execute the First Amendment without having to come back to the board for additional approval. We know what the moving parts are. We know what the areas are that cause us concern. We know that they have been fixed with other school districts. And we know that ultimately, those concerns are ones that, from a legal perspective, I have to try my best to make sure that we get the best deal possible and that we are protecting ourselves and our assets. Once that First Amendment is finalized, staff can then update the board at the next available work session or board meeting, whichever comes first. Doing it this way would prevent any unnecessary delay. It would also allow me the time to deal with the general counsel and secretary of the vendor so that we can finalize that. We have located contracts that this vendor has with Orange County, Volusia County, Florida State University, Broward County, a number of these contracts. We've noticed that in these contracts, many of them are, the ones that, the terms that they rejected or that they rejected of ours and inserted of their own are not present in some of those contracts. So we know that these are items that are on the table. These are items that we can work through. We simply have to stand up and say that that's what we want and make our position known. However, by doing it in this way, we would avoid delay and avoid having to wait until mid-January to get it back on the agenda again. My office is actively attempting to communicate with the vendor's legal department. Instructure so far has not been cooperating with a timeline to set up that meeting. But we have emailed, we have phone, made phone contact. It may be a long process if the vendor does not cooperate, but we're continuing to document our communication attempts. We will update the superintendent and the board chair going forward. My goal is to make this as rapid a transition as possible. But much like playing tennis, I can hit the ball across the net and I got to wait for somebody else to hit it back.
So Attorney Powers, I'm sorry, Attorney Powers and superintendent, this Canvas, this is something that we needed a long time ago. What is, I remember us talking about Canvas.
Online platform.
Online platform, right.
Chair, through our members of the board and Board Member Cummings, yes, this is our learning management platform that would be a one-stop shop to incorporate all the different pieces together, correct? It's used widely in some places that Attorney Powers has referenced in districts and post-secondary institutions. Some of you may be familiar with it and some folks have taught for teaching college and yes, so.
I think that's a huge amount for us to just go into haphazardly. The contract needs to be right. And if there are other districts that are, that have taken that language out and put the correct language in, this is Cummings. We need to get it correct. We don't need to go into it halfway. $750,000 is not chump change. And we need to make sure the platform is brought into the district the right way.
Yeah, that's definitely what I heard because I heard the threshold and then I heard 750 and that flag went off. So I agree with Mr. Powers and your suggestion. How do we go about voting for that, though?
Yeah, that was going to be my question. What do we, what are our next steps? If, once we vote against this, then what do we need to do?
I believe the chair can give us, I'm sorry, I believe that the board can give us consensus and vote to delegate authority for the, for the board chair and the superintendent to approve a contract once legal has finalized the changes that I anticipate. Once those changes have been made and it's approved, we can't technically approve it to form through the legal department because of the fact that the original agreement was not approved to form. So what I can do, though, is I can make sure that the terms and conditions of the contract are the most favorable and what we're looking for. At that point, then, I can refer it to the chair and superintendent to sign, provided this board votes to delegate their authority to, their signatory authority to the chair and the superintendent.
So that's what we would need a motion on tonight after we vote on this, to delegate the authority.
After, after it's recommended from you that it's in order.
Yes.
And I'd like to take a moment and thank you, Mr. Powers, for all of this due diligence that you have put in because Canvas is very popular, it's very needed, it's incredibly well-liked, you know, by our schools and even from kindergarten all the way up to the college level. So apparently it is, it's a wonderful program, it's a time saver, it's user-friendly, it's all the things that we need. But it was interesting because we had a lot of conversation about this, that some districts just rubber stamped whatever Canvas sent them and those contracts were definitely in favor of the company. And then other contracts were found where the language had been balanced and it was much more comfortable for you. So again, I thank you because there's a sense of urgency. We want this, we know, we know we want it, but we want to make sure that we get it in a way that protects us. So thank you for coming up with an innovative way to make this happen without holding it up any further.
Well, and I would like to thank.
It's unique.
I would like to thank Mr. Vianello for, he's been kind of a point person for us in contacting and making sure that if, if I needed, if I had questions about where the status of everything was and what's happened so far and what we needed, he was able to pull the right staff to get me those answers quickly. And he's really shown that he wants to, he wants us to do everything we can to make this contract a good deal for the, for the school board as well as something that's going to, that's going to benefit our classrooms and our students ultimately.
Right, right. And when everyone works together and communicates, great things happen. So I think we need a motion then to delegate the authority.
We have to vote on the motion.
Okay, that's right. The motion on the floor is, we have a motion to approve the agreement of online learning management system and then Instructure Incorporated, Canvas.
Do we vote yes for this then?
No.
We say no. Okay, that's what, then we do the, okay.
So we've had the motion, which was from Campbell, and then it was seconded by McCall. We've had the discussion and now we have the vote.
Okay.
So are we voting to approve the agreement? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No? It's unanimous? The motion, the vote failed.
So now I move to give authority to the superintendent and the board chair, once our attorney has done the due diligence on the contract and is comfortable with the terms.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody that really worked hard to find an innovative, innovative way to get this, keep this rolling so we can get it soon.
I have another question about this. When was Canvas going to be implemented into the district? Was it for this next semester or was it for the next school term?
So Chair, through our members of the board, Board Member Cummings, we are looking at doing the pilot and then moving it forward through the next year so we could have adequate training for all of our schools. We're piloting it to work out what that looks like and lessons learned in advance to take our time to do this properly. So we're going to, we're going to pilot it into schools and then move forward. We anticipate next year.
And I ask that because I definitely know that we need to try to get that wrapped up. And I know you just said you don't know what's up to them to hit the ball back over the net.
Right. And just so that you're aware, the items that are in potential dispute, they obviously know what they are because we sent over a draft agreement. They then sent back something that essentially undid all of our drafts and was more of a standardized agreement. But it wasn't really standardized because there were multiple other counties that are districts that are, that don't have that language.
So do we know the districts that have the language in theirs that we need in ours?
We do. In fact, we had also looked at even piggybacking off of the Florida State University agreement because it's quite similar. However, there are differences in it and because of the rules, statutory rules regarding piggybacking on contracts, we can't make any changes if we truly want to piggyback. So we have to, we have to make some changes that were really more like what Broward and Orange County have done. I don't think there will be problems because I honestly believe that once we have this conversation with a general counsel, provided that they're willing to take our business on a $750,000 contract and negotiate some of those things they've done for other districts, this literally could be something that's solved within a 30-minute phone call. So I don't anticipate this is something where we're going to have to go back and forth quite a bit. It's more been a matter of trying to set up that, find the right person because there are, there are various contract managers along the way, but trying to find the right person and then having that conversation.
I continue to be grateful that we're taking our time and we're doing it right. And that will be the lasting effect.
Thank you.
Anything else, board?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $25,349.69? And that would include 603 books valued at $2,713.50 to Denellen Elementary School from Greg and Jan Ritchie; $2,500 to Forest High School from Harvey L. Young Family Foundation Incorporated; $2,249.67 to Hillcrest Public School from Public Education Foundation of Marion County Grants for Great Ideas; $1,000 to Hillcrest Public School from Public Education Foundation of Marion County Grants for Great Ideas; $2,719.48 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks Public School from Public Education Foundation of Marion County Grants for Great Ideas; a 10-by-12 shed valued at $2,783 to Lake Weir High School from Central Florida Steel Buildings; 673 books valued at $3,028.50 to Romeo Elementary School from Greg and Jan Ritchie; $1,500 to Shady Hill Elementary School from their business partner, The Paddock Mall Chick-fil-A via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County; $2,496.54 to Spar Elementary School from Peter and Mary Lou Van Note; $1,000 to Vanguard High School from the Jones Family; $1,024 to Vanguard High School from the Rebae Family, I hope I pronounced that correctly; $2,290 to Westport High School from Jostons Incorporated. May I have a motion?
Go move.
Moved by Cummings, seconded by King. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Ms. McCall?
Absolutely. Always love thanking our community for the extras that you do for our schools. Again, the Public Education Foundation for all of the grants for great ideas.
Those were fun to read.
Yes, they are fun to read. So thank you to everyone and I'm wishing you, to all of our businesses and community, a very blessed and merry Christmas.
Thank you. Board committee reports and concerns. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Chair, through our members of the board. I actually have several, so I'll be as brief as possible. Wanted to acknowledge that we had our joint meeting with FADS and with the Florida School Board Association meeting this past week. And although virtual, still very enjoyable to be able to hear and dialogue around some of the biggest issues we're facing around our state and education. And one of those in particular that we had further discussion with, with the commissioner was based on the governor's emergency order from November 30th with our spring education plan. And as you probably are well aware, that we have been provided some assurances of some financial stability that comes from that emergency order. We have been provided with a template, an expectation around the spring 2021 education plan, the innovation plan, that also allows for continued choice for our parents and online learning with the assurance that we are going to continue to communicate adequate progress. These are all things that we've already discussed here at the board table and have had your support with. And so it really aligns very appropriately with what we're already doing and what we plan to do, which is very reassuring for us as a district. And so we will continue to work on what those offerings are for the springtime and communicate with our parents. So the plan is due to the state, to the Department of Education by December 15th. My hope was that we'd have a final draft to bring to you tonight, although, much like our discussion earlier and some other points, it's important not to rush. I have just received a draft form and I want to thank Mr. Avery for representing the teachers in that discussion. I would like at this time to take that draft plan and get input from our school teams. I don't think they've had the opportunity fully to provide some input into that. We are in that, in that plan, providing assurances to reach every child. We know that we've had challenges with the online learning. We know that we've had challenges with the online learning for a number of our students and we need to make sure that we're accelerating the education for every child to thrive. And so with the continued pandemic, we have to make sure to take our time to provide adequate progress monitoring that's in the plan and what does that look like? So I, as soon as that I have the opportunity to have some school teams to give some input, my plan is to share that with each of you. I will send that to you, then we will make that public, if I have your permission to move forward on that. Let me pause there and answer any questions you may have on the plan.
I listened to that press conference that they gave and the one thing I kept hearing that they were saying in that conference, that we were, as a state, we were going to come up with innovative ways to make sure that these kids did not slip. So I'm definitely interested to see how our district handles that aspect of what the Commissioner and the Governor said on that. Because they said it several, several different times and we know that they've had a gap from the spring, they had a gap from the summer, and those that didn't come right back still got a gap.
Yes.
So the gap is getting bigger, it's not getting smaller.
Right. So Board Member Cummings, that's precisely why I want to take some time to make sure that we're getting those who are closest to the work an opportunity to review and provide input, because we know that those challenges are not going to disappear overnight.
Right.
With the challenges we've had with our technology and inequity around reaching all children in our community and all the stretches, I traveled the other day to a school and still had trouble with wireless and cell service. And so those do not resolve themselves overnight. And so how are we being very diligent and very transparent around that? It's not just about money, but it is about resources and investing, and that's going to be a long-term impact for us to resolve. So absolutely, I think it's important to get input on that. I did want to also, and I'm happy to answer any further questions, talk about the financial component. We heard that, and we appreciate the state's support on this, that some of the impact that we expected might be less adverse to us because they've taken the districts that had no growth, student growth in terms of FTE. That means for those who are fully enrolled in the school district. And so for the school districts that did not have growth, and we are not one of them, we are not showing an increase in our student population, that the amount of impact would be spread out across districts to minimize those risks, those financial impacts. So they've taken some dollars from the transformation dollars from the state level, not ours, state dollars, and they've thrown some of those funds into that pot to reduce having some adverse costs associated with some other resources. So we're grateful for the state for that and we hope to continue to see a positive trend. It doesn't mean we're not going to have loss, we just don't know the exact dollar amount at this time. So we did want to thank them for that.
Dr. Gullit, if I may, did the state, I watched the news conference as well, and I feel like I remember hearing that there was also conversation around CARES money and federal dollars that may also help-
Correct.
... offset those losses.
Correct. They're utilizing the CARES dollars to make sure, and that, again, with the state-level funds, the transformation I referred to, turnaround dollars, to put that into that pot, then to take some of the burden off of the school districts. So we greatly appreciated that.
So Dr. Gullit, were you hearing anything at FADS about next year? I'm hearing a lot about the spring, but I'm very concerned about next year, '21, '22.
Right. Board Member McCall, we have not heard anything about next year yet, right? There's been conversation about that, so we're trying to get through spring, but no, we still do not know what the full impact will be. And so as you might imagine, Ms. Boston Ellis and I are talking and she's having her conversations with the chief financial officers across the state also to see what that true impact will be. I think we still need to be very, we're grateful for less of an impact, but we still have a long way to go and we need to be very diligent and very careful and very conservative in our spending and plan for what that might look like.
I just, I want everybody to keep that focus because we're talking a lot about being sure we get through the spring and conserve our children, but I have a huge concern for next year.
Yes, yes. And this order and plan specifically addresses the spring for this year. So it's a great question and we do need to be mindful publicly that we still have a long way to go and we don't know-
Any timeline for when the exact dollar amount may be known of impact to our district?
I do not know yet, no.
All right. And I know you'll keep us posted, and the reason why I ask that question is that it continues to bother me that all of our employees and all of us, everyone, has gone above and beyond to get through this. It was painful to make the decision that we made on behalf, especially our veteran teachers. They continue to stay at the front of my mind, so I hope that they will continue to tune in and follow this carefully because, just speaking for myself, it begins and ends in the classroom. And the beginning teachers, you know, have gotten some help that they really needed in terms of salary. And I would like to think that if the economy were different this session, that some money would be put forward and maybe it still will for our veteran teachers to help offset that and provide them with what they truly deserve. So for now, we're going to have to stay tuned, but my point is, is that veteran teachers, you're not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Thrower, and all of our, all of our employees matter, every one of them, including our veteran teachers. So the next item, December 18th, next Friday, I can confirm that we are looking at what I've termed as a board retreat. And I understand, I've learned that board retreat is a new, those are new terms for us in Marion County, so my apologies if I've misrepresented, it's, those are terms that we've used in a lot of places.
Sounds very luxurious.
Sounds wonderful, it sounds like a spa day, and it certainly is not. So for the public and anyone watching, what it means is just a workshop, which is in this room, much like any other training. Our plan is to look at our vision and our mission and our, where we're going as a district and that we are on the way up and we are moving at a rapid pace to get there. So we will work together as a governance team to work on those pieces and set off on our future strategic plan, our multi-year plan. So just want to clarify, it's a meeting, it's a workshop opportunity for us to work together, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarity.
We're not going to the monkey hotel.
Thank you for that clarity, because I think we were going to get our feet done and all that stuff.
Yes, no.
We need to make sure that we cleared that one up, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. We are-
I can bring some Jimmy Buffett to the floor.
We have no, we have no time for that and we're, I'm sure you're gonna, gonna make everyone work really hard and earn our, and our time.
Can we at least dress comfortably?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So to clarify that-
You said that's the 18th?
Yes, that's next Friday, 8:00 AM.
The same day for master board training?
That is part of that, that is part of that work, that is part of the refresh and then moving into where are we going and how are we gonna get there?
Gotcha.
So we can work together on it, yes, sir. And Jimmy Buffett music is fine. Attorney Powers, so, and dress casually, thank you for that. So CDC guidelines, I'm sure all of you have heard and probably have received questions about what do those new guidelines mean for us, the seven and 10-day changes? I asked the same question, I had extensive conversation with Mark Lander from the Department of Health this past Saturday. And so we had a meeting yesterday briefly to try to work on next steps. We have since learned that there's some more work being done on behalf of the Department of Health in articulating what that does mean for us. We anticipated, hopeful that it would bring about some of our employees and students back sooner, and we are still hopeful that may occur, but at this time, that has not been clarified, so it'll keep you posted. We have a follow-up meeting tomorrow and hope to hear more about that. We will continue, and we are, as we talked about earlier, continuing with our policy, of course, with our face coverings, but part of the articulation agreement is that social distancing is required, is required and has to be assured before those seven and 10-day requirements are in place. And so they are going to work on providing some updates to us on Wednesday and we'll keep everyone posted on what that means for Marion County. And then I wanted to share that yesterday, we had great pleasure spending the morning, thanks to the Public Education Foundation, and recognizing our school-related employees of the year, our finalists in our schools and our departments. Such a joy to go and recognize and hear from, from the schools and from those departments, the work and the true impact that our employees are having. And it was a pleasure to congratulate Kathy Gotcher from Reddick Collier, who is the district overall winner. And the students were out there and just student, hearing from student voices even the impact and how much they love and appreciate her. And I asked the students separately, I said, what is it that makes Ms. Gotcher special? They call her Ms. Kathy. They said, she's nice and she's kind and she listens and she cares. And I thought, that says it all. So, so thank you to all of our employees for the great work that they're doing. Last but not least, I told you it was a little long, apologies.
Does it?
It is very timely that last note I really wanted to share was about being, being safe. Mr. Carpenter set us off tonight with that keen reminder. Our expectations have not changed and we care deeply about all of our students and our employees. And so I ask from, from the seat of a superintendent, and I know all of you share this as well, please be safe. We want to have everyone back safely in January. We want to continue to do all of the great work that we are doing in Marion County public schools and, but we need your help. And so work with us and make those decisions and have a happy holiday, but please be safe so that we can have everyone back. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Gullit. Attorney Powers.
I wanted to take the opportunity to thank, my staff has been working quite diligently and done a great job in keeping me on track and making sure that my time was, was divided well, being able to meet with other departments and being able to review the contracts and doing everything we need. They're doing a great job and I'm very, very appreciative of their work and their service. Right now, we are at, one of the goals when I came into the legal department was to try to make sure that we expedited things. Of course, that's been an easy ask because of the fact that we had, we had a long period of time in which we had an interim school board attorney who, she's been absolutely wonderful, Ms. Green. However, her time's divided in different directions as well. And my being able to be there in the office and review contracts as they're presented, review vendor apps, we have gotten our average, basic contractual review turnaround time is two to three days at most. Then on the more complex ones that we have to do significant drafting, no more than about four to five days. In some of those cases where we have significant issues, where we have to go back and forth to, to other staff in order to do that, staff with other departments have been very, very cooperative and I wanted to say thanks to everyone in those departments who makes our job easier. Because one of the things I have encountered quite rapidly is that, that all of those departments, every department, has someone who interacts frequently with legal. And as a result, that means that they are essentially, for our purposes, they are the face of that department. And they are the people that we have to work with in order to bring things up to speed quickly, in order to make things work well. And I appreciate each and every one of them because I've gotten to know many of them, met with several of them, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the ongoing working relationships that we're building. I also had here a copy of the memorandum of understanding that we have done on the, with the Marion County Sheriff's Office for our emergency response. Nothing new here. This is essentially what we have been doing with Marion County Sheriff's Office and emergency response for quite some time, has been codified. We had, we had draft agreements in the past. This is essentially laid out exactly what we're already doing so that we have a roadmap. This way, in the event that we actually are in an emergency situation, we have it spelled out so that everyone can see what we've already been working with, what we've agreed to, what we've already done in the past. So this is sort of a central touchstone document that anyone can go to and say, okay, that's what each of the parties does, this is who's responsible for what. That way, the last thing that we would need in any sort of emergency response or disaster response is anyone being unclear as to whose role was what. And of course, you never know exactly until you get into that disaster or emergency when some question will come up as to which person has responsibility for which role. And frankly, it can end up making one, both, or all agencies look like we're not doing what we're supposed to if we don't have it laid out there and everyone's clear on it from the beginning. And so this just is something we've been working on with the Sheriff's Office and have recently completed. We also have worked with the Sheriff's Office on several other documents, some of which are, have been signed off on by the Board and are going for future review. And we're looking forward to continuing a good relationship with them in our SRO agreements and other agreements that we do. And Timothy McCourt, who's general counsel over there, has been working closely with me on those items and I appreciate everything that he's done with the Sheriff's Office. He's, he's quite a diligent and intelligent attorney and I've greatly appreciated working with him on all of these things as well. Apart from that, I also, kudos to our, to our executive staff for the work that we've done on the NEOLA policies. Those are coming along well and we are continuing to work on them. And I suspect that very soon, the Board will be asked to address some of those issues again so that we can continue to move forward. Everything's, everything is working well. I hesitate to say it's under control because as soon as you say that, then you're asking, you're asking for problems, but things are going well. And I just wanted to report that I've been very, very pleased with, with how things have worked there and Dr. Gullit's leadership in making sure that this, this happens and is carried out well. One of the things as a school board attorney that I spend a significant portion of my time doing is following what we call the chatter. And the chatter is with the school, national and state school board associations. That is current issues and what's going on, and we have user groups wherein, there's really nothing new under the sun. Everything that we're facing as a district, other districts are facing, if not statewide, nationally as well. And very often, and it's, it's actually been a little surprising to me, I'll see something come across our wire, read a few cases that people have contributed regarding that and wonder, hmm, we may get something like that soon. And literally the next day, I've got, that issue has come up. And so in dealing with those things, every time I see something that's a little scary on the, on those, I immediately start making some notes so that I can, if it comes up here, we can, we can deal with it. And also some things that I believe we need to be proactive about, so try to take some notes that we can do that as well. 2021 is going to be an interesting year. There's a lot of potential issues that are, that are coming up from, of course, continuing COVID response, vaccination, all kinds of questions around vaccination and employee, employee issues regarding that as well. There's school funding issues, of course, that are novel, very new, we haven't seen them before, questions that, that are going to be quite different than they have been in the past. Attendance issues, ongoing attendance issues, those are all things that are very, very different than they were in, let's say, 2015, 2020, and 2021, very different years. We have every reason to believe 2021 is going to be a year that actually presents us with, with less surprises, with fewer surprises, but more work and a lot of things that need to be done in the long term. So I am very happy and pleased to have been working with the staff from various departments and accomplishing that, and I encourage staff from any department, if there's anything that we can do from the legal department to assist, or if anyone has any, any thoughts or concerns, please, of course, follow your appropriate change of command in the, to the degree that needs to happen, but we're always there and always ready to help, always ready to help. So thank you very much to all who have made my job easier as I dive in the deep end of the swimming pool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. You've definitely jumped right in and started building relationships and identifying the the- the, the bottlenecks of where contracts, you know, we're, we're getting stuck and then coming up with, with ways to create system solutions that will be longstanding and, and anything that smoothes the workflow and gets it done right the first time is a benefit to all of us. So, thank you very much and happy holidays to you too.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Lopez.
Board, you were given, or you were sent an email by Jennifer Leeds to submit your community member for Textbooks Adoption Committee. I know two of you have already done that. If you could please do that by this week, I would really appreciate it. I do have a meeting with Jennifer tomorrow, so we'd like to go ahead and get that going on that. And the next thing is, I will go ahead and send you an invite this evening so that way you have it on your calendar for your board retreat, excuse me, for your board work session meeting on the 18th, starting at 8:00 a.m. And I'll, I'll follow up with an email so that we can go ahead and make sure that we're all set and your needs are met because we're going to work right through lunch and so forth. But you will receive an email from me as well on that. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much and you have a happy, safe holiday as well.
Thank you.
Are you going to the DR?
Yes, I am.
All right. Safe travels. Right, Ms. King, Vice Chair King.
Yes. Originally, I wasn't going to mention anything about the pay raise, but it keeps coming up for, again and again for comment. And I know that evening it wasn't televised. So, I just feel like there's a couple of things that I do need to say to explain why I voted for what I did. And I feel that, not I feel, I know, we were three tenths of a point of what was being asked. And, but when I made my decision, my main goal for every one of our employees is to ensure that you, every one of you have a job next year. And the way I looked at the whole picture was like, okay, if we give, you know, the 3% now, what will that look like long-term, next year, in the future? Because that is a reoccurring cost. It would not be a one-time pay raise, it's going to be reoccurring. And so, I don't know if that was, if you guys could hear that, if you could hear my response, what we were saying. And I also want to add that I am not asking anything of you that I am not doing for myself. I am married to a school teacher and I understand the importance of veteran teachers. But I, as a school board member, I had to do what is best for our district and for everyone. You know, if we pay attention to the news, we also know that 32,000, 32,000 Disney employees were laid off. And, you know, if you consider that Florida receives our revenues from the tourist industry, you know, those numbers weren't clear enough for me to say, okay, what will this look like next year? Yes, we can fund this moving forward. When I look at those numbers, it's alarming. And I want to make sure, as a board member, that you and everyone has a job next year. So, I just felt like maybe it wasn't clear, maybe people do know that and they still want to be upset and angry over three tenths of that point. But I just wanted to make that clear from my side. With that being said, I am going to say that I am grateful for each and every one of you and I appreciate your hard work. And this is our last meeting for this school year. And this year has been overwhelming. So, I encourage each and every one of you to use this time for self-care, whether it be spiritually, physically, mentally, all the above. But use this time for you and your family so that next year, each and every one of you are here and you're safe and you're well. And with that, I'm just going to say, please have a blessed Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, or whatever you celebrate. Use this time for you and your family. And that's what I have this evening, Ms. Ror.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Ms. McCall.
Yes, I too want to congratulate Kathy Gotcher, being our score-related Employee of the Year. Thank you for all you do, Kathy. And thank you for being a role model for others in your profession. I also want to thank Dr. Gullett and Martin Vianello and the whole executive team because as difficult as COVID has been and the things that we have had to deal with, through your leadership, I feel confident, very confident in us moving forward. And so, I want to thank you because I can sleep at night a little bit easier knowing that, that you're in charge. So, thank you for, for all that you're doing. Mr. Powers, again to you, thank you for your dedication and for the work that you've already done. I, I am so comfortable with where we are as a board and, and an administrative team. I really think that even though the times are going to get difficult, I think the way we're working together is going to help us make the decisions that we have to make. I also, Ms. Ror and I will be attending the, she'll hand that to Ms. King, the legislative delegation meeting on the 14th where we will be talking about our priorities. And we will make it very clear, we will be giving these out to our legislators. I did hear today that there will not be Legislative Day in Tallahassee. They're still not sure what Tallahassee's even going to look like, if they're going to be allowing people into the Capitol. So, the Florida School Board Association is working on that, but I think our best contact is with our local legislators here. So, whenever you have the opportunity to visit with them, please do and continue to remind them about our priorities. But Ms. Ror and I will be doing that on the 14th, representing the board.
Along with any other board member that would.
Oh, any other board member can attend, absolutely. But we're, we're, we are on the agenda. There's also a legislative luncheon that you, I believe should have gotten invitation to.
And I hope you all did. And, okay, got it. You don't think you got it? Okay. Well, we need to make sure that, that you do get that because in, in previous years, the Chair typically and the Superintendent speak and Board Member McCall is our Legislative Liaison. And, but we stand together, you know, whoever is able to attend. And I think that's very, a very important optic and it's who we are.
I think it would look great if we all five stand up there together, to be very honest with you. I think that's a powerful message.
Yeah, if we can get the invite. I don't have it on my calendar.
Okay. And that is Monday, the 14th.
Yeah, December 14th is coming.
Yes. And the delegation meeting starts at, at 1:00 and the luncheon is from 11:00 to, or 11:30 to 12:30, I think. But yes, we need to get.
Is it at, is that CFC?
Yes.
At Central Florida?
Yes, at the Weber Center.
So, I can forward you the invitation that I got.
You'll do that? Okay. Okay, great.
I'll be happy to do that. And I want to wish all of our employees.
Ms. Martinez-Lopez, perhaps?
Yeah. Can you forward it to Ms. Martinez-Lopez? And then, that, then she can forward it to all board members? That way, that prevents any cross-communication.
That's fine. I'll be happy to do that. And I want to wish everyone a very safe, restful holiday season and come back rejuvenated and refreshed. And please, we know that you have COVID fatigue, we all do. But really, when we look at a year, it truly is a short period of time in the span of life. So, continue to do all that you're doing so we can keep our kids learning in front of our teachers. So, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
Board Member Cummings.
Good evening, everybody, again. Congratulations also to Ms. Gotcher, our school-related employees, and all of those who were in consideration. They do so much for our schools and oftentimes, they get unnoticed, but we want to let them know that they all matter. And we appreciate it and congratulations to her on, last week, we had a wonderful virtual FSBA FAS conference. I say it was wonderful because they made it fit really, really well together and it was very seamless. Really no glitches, anything like that. It went, it flowed. For the record, Marion County was all over the virtual session. Ms. McCall, I think, it's one screen you go to every time you go to that screen, Ms. McCall is talking. So, and she's talking about, she's talking about the three Es. And so, she was, she was there. Mr. Christian and Board Member Campbell were presenters for the Sunspur. And then, there was a screen, there was a screen where there was a contest for a scholarship. The top three people would win the scholarship. And it was based on how many people went to the vendors' session. And myself, Ms. McCall was on the board, on the, on the board, Ms. King was on the leaderboard, Ms. Campbell was on the leaderboard, I was on the leaderboard. And I almost thought that somebody from Marion County was going to get it. And I stayed up, I stayed up all night, I guess that was Wednesday night going to Thursday night because Ms. Campbell, Board Member Campbell, was leading. She was leading. She was up there and then she just stopped completely. I said, so this is my chance to make my move. So, I just want to let you know I did finish higher than you. But, let me say this to Marion County. We, we were trying to get this scholarship because we could bring that scholarship back to Marion County and give it to anybody, any student in the county. So, that was, that was some fun part. But I, I, there were several classes that we took. One, one class I took was about how districts are going to look at, coming out of COVID. So, we need to understand, I think, everybody, we can't get lax now with COVID because everybody is dealing with this situation. And, and, and I kept hearing this over and over based on different things. Oh, Ms. Boston Ellis was also a presenter. She did a wonderful job with her class as well. Everybody's dealing with this COVID and we're, I promise you, we will come out of this. And I think, I truly believe that when we come out of this, we'll come out of this better, stronger. We'll have some new things in place that will help us to go forward. So, I was, I was encouraged by that. But then, there was this one class that I took that really, I, I really hope that it's something that we need to look at as a district. And it was the class Cultural Awareness Through Communication. Shayla Kennedy from Orange County. Tremendous class. And it speaks to, it, it speaks to the time that we're in right now, especially with, just, just, it just speaks to this time. And, and there are some cultural awarenesses and, and cultural diversity things and cultural issues that we, as all districts, she brought them out so well and I just, I got to figure out a way, some kind of way that I can get her here for my church. Because this is, this was beyond just a school thing. She was that good, so.
She's our president of Sunspur. So, I can make that happen.
Okay. So, so there are some great, great, great things in that conference. It's on, I think it's up for 30 more days, but you can still go back and view it. So, I want to encourage our folk, if they have access to get on there, to go and look at some of those classes because there were some tremendous presenters in those classes. And that was, that was a dynamic, that was a dynamic one. The guy that spoke on trust the first day, awesome, 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 awesome speaker, awesome keynote speaker. And then, I want to, I want to give congratulations to the Vanguard High School football team and the Dunellen High School football team. They played in the play, they played a playoff game Friday, very close game. Dunellen prevailed, one of my schools. Go Tigers. They prevailed. And, and it was a very good game. I wasn't there, I heard about it. It was a very good game. But then, we had some tragedies that struck later this weekend with one of the Vanguard players. So, and, and, and one of the things I noticed is, I want to commend all of our coaches for the dedication that they give to these kids. It's beyond the game. It's beyond the four quarters. It's beyond practice. These coaches, and I don't care what sport it is, these coaches take up personal time, they sacrifice personal time, money. These kids become their kids. And they have a, they have a personal relationship with each one of their players. I don't care if it's the starter or if it's the kid that, that does not get in the game but a minute, the whole season. They still have a relationship with these kids. And I've seen some things, negative things in the community where people would, this is this old adage, they're with you when you're winning, but when you lose, they're not with you. That is so unfair for our coaches because they are with these kids beyond the four, four quarters that they're in that game. They're, they're with these kids. That, one of those coaches lost a kid this weekend to a tragedy, tragic situation. It's killing him. So, we have to take, take this, take, the sport is a game. But what these coaches are teaching these kids is about life and how to go beyond the four quarters and deal with life. So, please, people made bad calls, people made bad plays, that's a game. But the lessons that they're giving these kids are beyond when the buzzer rings, are beyond the meat or whatever it is. So, please keep that in consideration, people, and, and celebrate these coaches for what they're, they're putting into these kids. They're instilling morals, they're instilling character, they're instilling work ethic, they're instilling things that's going to go further with these kids beyond, some kids may never play another sport after they get out of high school, but there are some of the things they learn on that field, on that court, in that pool, on that tennis court, is going to go with them forever. So, please celebrate our coaches. And again, congratulations to Vanguard and Dunellen for being in the playoffs. Congratulations to Dunellen, you're still in it, so we need you to bring home something. Bring home something. And, and as, as everyone has said, please enjoy this holiday season. It's been tough. This has been a real, 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 real tough season, tough year for everyone. Let's not get lax, enjoy your family. It may be different, it may look different, but let's, let's have a great Christmas, a safe Christmas, safe New Year. And let's come back and let's finish this year strong. We started strong, let's finish it strong. So, that's what I'm looking forward to. So, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Board Member Cummings, Board Member Campbell.
So, I keep thinking while we're sitting here and talking about, obviously, all of the challenges that we have been having in the state of Florida, across the state with our students being in school and what that looks like and how challenging that has been. And I have to say, I'm still grateful because I talked to my friends in other parts of the country. A friend of mine on the West Coast who has a senior and a kindergartner and a couple of children in between, they haven't been in school since March. And what that looks like for her family and what that looks like for her senior and for her kindergartner, I'm grateful. I'm grateful that we figured it out. So, while there are still lots of kinks and lots of things that are not exactly the way we would like for them to be, I'm still grateful that we figured out how to make it happen. We still have 41-plus thousand students within the district that are receiving instruction right now. Eighty-plus percent of those are face-to-face. We know that that is the best. And I told a group of staff the other day, I'm, I have a few things I want to mention here. One is a gratitude to District One Principals because they've been inviting me into their staff and faculty meetings just to introduce myself and say hello and let them know that I want to be a part of whatever they want me to be a part of. And I know Dr. Gullett and I are going to be touring some of those schools together and I'm excited about that. But I was telling them that while we know that there has been a slide and while we know there has been a little bit of an educational gap, an academic gap, obviously, that we've seen. And we've seen that more significantly in some than others. I still believe, and this may just be a personal opinion, but I still believe that our children in Marion County are going to be ahead of some of their peers around the country because they have had the opportunity to at least have the education they've been receiving. So, I'm grateful, very much so. And, you know, this has been a unique way to start being a school board member, first of all. I've said this a couple of times within the last couple of weeks because I was elected and then a couple of weeks later, I was sworn in. The very next day, we had a work session and then we haven't met since. So, it's been about three weeks since I've seen all of you and been able to even talk and have these kinds of conversations. So, So I, I wanted to do a couple of thank yous. I wanted to, first of all, say, in the consent agenda tonight, we did approve 23 internal audits for schools. And sometimes, I know, and I was sitting out in the audience just kind of breezing through the agenda and just looking over consent things, and it's like, okay, you're going through one after the other. But I want to say thank you to bookkeepers and school secretaries and those that are doing a tremendous job. We have internal auditors that are showing that they're doing a tremendous job. And that may be one of those positions that feels a little overlooked, that may not be recognized as often. But 23 internal audits saying that they were great and we approved them as such. And so job well done for those folks. I'm echoing my fellow board members on the congratulations to the school-related employees of the year, the nominees and the finalists, as well as the winner. I had the privilege of joining two of the stops yesterday on the caravan, so that was a lot of fun. And one of them, one of the finalists was in my children's school. So I, I knew one of the finalists and so that was fun. When they rang the buzzer, I knew she was going to be the one coming out. I'm like, wait, wait, wait. So it, it all, it all worked out well. But that was a really fun time and, and kudos to the Public Ed Foundation for really making it happen and despite all of the circumstances. And I know they're going to do a great job on Golden Apple as well. I know just, a lot of things are different this year and we understand that. Also, thanks to the FSBA and FADS, as you all have all been echoing. It was a really great conference virtually. I do believe that very first speaker hit a home run, so much so, talking about trust, really showing how to do an online virtual presentation for an hour and a half to keep people engaged and keep people interested. And it kind of set the bar a little high for the rest of the conference, in my opinion. But overall, it was, it was excellent and very well done. I was grateful that, as a part of Sunsborough, Sunshine State School Public Relations Association, which is one of the organizations that I am a part of as their executive director, to be able to award Marion County's own Megan Magamal for the Margie Davidson Leading Light Award. So I was grateful to be a part of that and, and having that opportunity. And also, then I would just want to thank school district staff. As, again, as a new board member, there are things that will show up on the agenda, like the consent agenda items, that all of the rest of the board has had an opportunity to hear in a work session and actually participate in that dialogue. And I have not had that liberty yet. As, you know, a legally sworn-in school board member, I'm required to vote on things that I may not have weighed in on. So I did have a half a dozen questions or so. And every school district employee I reached out to was terrific to get those answers back to me. And so as I navigate my way through, thank you for understanding that and, and being a part of that with me. A couple of other things I wanted to bring up as well. On the consent agenda item, we also approved the Reading Pals program through the United Way of Marion County, which is a program that I'm very passionate about. I talked with Ms. Beck about it today some and how that's going to potentially look a little bit different for us as we have it maybe in a virtual-type setting as opposed to a volunteer setting in the schools. And, and so as we look to the spring, I don't want, I certainly don't want to mitigate anything that has already been done. But as we look to the spring, my hope is that we, as a board, would not be completely against for the entire spring saying, right now in December, there's not going to be another volunteer on our campus for the entire school year. I, I don't know that that has been completely established. I don't know if we're taking it time and time. But obviously, you know that Good News Clubs are not operating. Reading Pals will not be able to have volunteers in schools. Places like Field Trips to Discovery Science Center and Silver River Museum. And I know that they're having their own challenges. But I'm, I'm just thinking a little broader, I guess. And as we look to the spring, I, I want us to at least consider having those kinds of thoughts and conversations. I, I have been asking questions about, I know we're quarantining children who are close contacts and close contacts are difficult in classrooms that are more crowded now and, and all of those things. But we have done a very exceptional job of being able to keep our kids and employees safe. And we haven't had as many, if, if any, transmissions in school that have been happening. I, I don't know that there's documented that that's at least student-to-student transmission. Still trying to get the numbers on that. I know the number is very low, I don't know exactly what the number is. Hopefully, coming out of this Thanksgiving break that we've just had, that students will continue to be diligent in their social distancing on campuses. We have a lot of sports activities happening. We have a middle school volleyball tournament happening this weekend. We have lots of activities that are happening. And, and frankly, I was speaking with a band parent just this week who mentioned to me, obviously, there were decisions made about the parade and decisions made about some other concerts and things. And, and I just want to ensure that while we have removed opportunities that have always been there, I want us to think a little more creatively on how we can bring back some opportunities. Obviously, we're not going to bring back a Christmas parade. I mean, that's not something that's going to happen. But if there are competition opportunities that we could present or something that, while we've taken things away, I want us to make sure that we're looking to ways we can replace instead of just removing. So those are my thoughts on, on that particular item. I was going to bring up the board retreat as well, just to say, we're not in a swanky hotel. Please don't understand that, you know, I'm looking forward to that opportunity to strategically plan together and put together measurable objectives. And you're talking my language, those are the things that I do on a daily basis and love and get involved in. While I'm mentioning that as well, I, I want to say personally that I would love to see come out of this board retreat, board workshop, board strategic planning session, that we talk about and think about a new brand for Marion County Public Schools. I know it's been a long time. Branding, obviously, is another one of those things that's my thing. But I, I want it to be our thing. And I want us to say, this is a new season, this is a new day. What does that look like for us? We have new leaders, we have new people in place. And is it time for us to put that forth in a look, in a feel that's going to actually make our, our staff and our employees and everyone in the community proud of the trust that we're going to put in, in place that they might have been lacking in the past? You mentioned coaching. And I also want to say that character coaches are something kind of new on our football teams and other teams this past year. And I'm grateful, I've seen that firsthand. My husband is a, a character coach for a team in town. And I'm grateful that those coaches, football coaches, have allowed potentially non-football players to come into their locker rooms and share and to, to exemplify character and integrity and, and all of those kinds of things and become like a mentor apart from even the football coaches. So that, that's been a great thing to see. The last thing I wanted to mention is, is textbook review committee. So I, I have gotten my information in. I actually have one extra person that agreed to serve that I have already filled my slots. So if any of you are looking for someone, I'm going to share that name and contact information with Ms. Martinez Lopez. So if one of you wants to reach out to her, if you're needing someone, she is an adjunct professor at the College of Central Florida and would be grateful to participate in that from an English language arts standpoint. And then finally, I think we have one more work session before the holidays, but this is our final board meeting. So Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone. May we have a blessed and prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. And what comes to my mind is being thankful. And I'd like to start by thanking Formature Cummings for, for your leadership, for your steadiness, for your kindness and your willingness to be such a great listener as we've navigated through some pretty extraordinary times. And you were that steady hand that, that we really needed during your tenure. And, and I just wanted to acknowledge you and, and thank you. It sometimes feels like things are moving at lightning speed and don't always get the chance to say everything that's, that's on my heart. But thank you again. And then secondly, Scott Carpenter was right. He spoke to us earlier. I refuse to believe that the world is not full of wonderful, kind and loving people that, that want to do the right thing and that are looking for the opportunity to work together for the benefit in our business of, of children. And I said it begins and, and ends in the classroom, but all of us have a role in that. And I appreciate, Board Member Campbell, that you mentioned our, our bookkeepers because there are so many unsung heroes. And they're just quietly doing what they do every day. And, and the system works. And, and, and the system is getting better. And, and I do look forward to the conversation at our, our workshop when we do get to all be together in a more informal way and, and talking about how to solidify and condense our, our path and, and what we're going to name that. Because I think, Dr. Gullett, you, you always have a statement, we're, we're moving, we're, what is it? I know it's great. And every time I hear it, I'm like, yes, that's, that's just the kind of optimism that we need. And, and that's just the kind of relationship building that aid districts maintain. And we passed some really good things tonight for kids. One of them that didn't have to hit the agenda because it was below the spending threshold was a, a new, very inexpensive and wonderful program that was brought to my attention by none other than the taxman, George Albright. And we know the taxman can find people. And we know that we have been working diligently to find every single student and whether they're in our state anymore or not, and making sure that they're okay and that they're enrolled in school. And that contract, I had the pleasure of signing it. And so we are going to have folks from the Social Work Department being trained on it. And it will allow them to be much more efficient in, in tracking down students. And, and that's what's best for kids. And also being able to follow up with parents, get the most up-to-date phone numbers and, and make those connections. When, when kids feel connected to school, when parents feel like it's important to send their kids to school because they're learning things that they need to know, then that's going to improve our attendance. So, so thank you, Mr. Albright, for, for caring enough to, to help us with, with that solution. We all know what we need to do. It's, it's very simple. Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, social distance, wear a face covering when, when social distance can't happen. It's the new big three, you know? We, we want to continue to have the benefit of our kids being in school five days a week. And we're one of the few states that, that have been able to accomplish that. And it extends to all of our activities, including our winter sports. I, I feel like I'm probably speaking for the, the whole board, feel free to chime in if I'm not. But I don't want to restrict the community from being able to attend our basketball games. I don't want to have to go back to the voucher system. I, I like the idea of calculating the space and then having people be able to attend. And, but, but folks, it, it's up to all of us to make sure that if you want to attend these, these events, that you've got to do your part. And if you're sitting with your clan, but then you get up to go and to the snack bar or do whatever you're going to do, you need to put your mask on. And, because the last thing I think any of us want to do is, is restrict attendance at, at our winter sports, especially the indoor ones. And again, Scott Carpenter made it clear that, that COVID is real. And, and we want every single person to come back to us after the holidays, ready and raring to go. And, and speaking of the, the extended partnerships, I love getting this, the memorandum of understanding tonight between the emergency management, the school board and, and our sheriff. And, and Board Member Wes Sherr-King, I want to thank you because I feel like this began with, with the generators, it began with that tricky Hurricane Dorian. None of us knew where that darn storm was going. And, and so we spent a lot of time in the Department of Emergency Management and learned a lot about what it takes to coordinate between agencies and governmental entities. And, and when we have trust and transparency and you work together, it, it's amazing, you know, what, what happens. And it's all for the benefit of, of kids. And so, yes, you know, Marion County's been an underdog in, in some ways for a while, but I'm a Browns fan. So I do believe in miracles. And I can't wait for the Ravens game on, on Monday. And so, so that being said, you know, everybody, everybody has their time and their season. And, and I feel like we are rapidly accelerating towards our time and, and our season for, for Marion County Public Schools. And that happens with, with everyone's support. There's one specific item, I know, Board Member Cummings, that you were able to attend virtually the social-emotional learning meeting. And just for the reminder to the community, we, we had concerns about the Sanford-Harmony free curriculum. So that was pulled, but we recognize that, that type of, of support for our kids is very important. It was something that came out of the Marjorie Stonem Douglas, how massacres, how important it is for kids to learn to get along with each other and, and have common core values in a school setting. I also learned that social-emotional learning curriculums, there's a reason why boards go to the free ones like Sanford-Harmony because others are basically very similar and can cost anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000. So I feel like this is a conversation that's just beginning. We have a timeline of the 15th to get a recommendation for a new curriculum. But I'm already feeling like, although it's urgent, we want to make sure that we make a decision that's going to be in, in everyone's best interest. So if you have more, more input from that, I know it was more of an introductory meeting.
It was more of an introduction, but there's a, they sent us a link to be able to assess the, the SEL courses or curriculums and then make a determination which one we think were good.
Right.
But like you said, embedded in them are pretty much, they're pretty much the same from what I'm reading so far. There's some variations in them, but a lot of them are very similar. So we, I think whenever, whatever we, whatever we implement, we have to make sure that our professionals in the classroom have the ability to, to do what they need to do as far as teaching their classroom. And I'm sure we'll figure that out when we have these work sessions.
Okay. And I believe it's five curriculums that are being evaluated. And Board Members, please know that those curriculums are available. And I think tomorrow is the last day for any time between eight in the morning to, to five in the afternoon. And if you email Amanda Steckman, she can probably even send you the curriculum so that you can review them online if, if you can't get to where they physically are. But since it was, you know, us as, as a board that pulled it, I think that it's going to be important for us to continue to, to keep this along with everything else at, at the front of our minds. And it may be helpful too for that department to know exactly what we're looking for. And, and, and in my mind, we want kids to, to be safe and, and free from bullying and be treated kindly in a school setting and to be included. And if we can find a basic curriculum that, that covers those bases, I'll be satisfied. And I'm open to what.
I still go back to, is a curriculum what we want to do? Or is it the culture that we want to give staff development for so that we have a culture of respect, we have a culture of acceptance? So I'm, I'm not sure that a curriculum can do that. I'm just, I'm just not sure. And I tend to want to look more at sensitivity training for staff and professional development to give them the tools to help our children on a daily basis. And I'm not sure that a curriculum is the best way to do that. So I'm still there. I'm still wanting us to look at, looking at staff development and sensitivity training and all of that versus a curriculum. And I, I just, I need to be convinced that the curriculum's the right way to go, but I just don't know that it is.
And I, I agree. I totally agree with Ms. McCollum on that. Because as I said, you read these, there are some things in them that we, we would disagree on. And I, I'm thinking that if we get the professionals, the teachers, the staff, put And I'm thinking that if we get the professionals, the teachers, the staff, put them in the right mindset, they know what to do. And we need to, I just think that we need to look at that as well.
Yeah, I agree. Because I haven't had a chance to ask the question, but I haven't looked at the curriculum because I just got the Ed Credible link today. But I did listen to the recording, and it sounded like there was five, you know, people or programs that were submitted. But I'm curious about how that worked, like what timeframe did they use? And did everybody know? I kind of felt like this was just so quick, just to hurry up and get this in. And I want us to make sure that we are truly, you know, taking our time embedding this and doing it the correct way and not just replacing it with another program just because we feel like we have to. Because if the program isn't any good, we're no better off. But I do agree with Ms. McCall with, you know, maybe the professional development, the trainings and some background that way. I would like to know and explore those options also.
Well, and I think we were looking, if I remember correctly, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but I thought Legal was going to look into, is it a curriculum that we're, that the statute mandates? Or is it? Or is it, is it, how is it stated and what does it actually mean, Mr. Powers? Because I think that's going to also help us.
That's going to be my question. What are we required?
Yeah. So because I think, you know, there's.
I think the statute mentions certain tier.
Tiered instruction. Tiered three instruction. But what does that mean? Do we have to, does that specifically mean curriculum? Or does that mean that we're training our teachers on how to identify when there's a bullying problem, some sensitivity training, some diversity training, some acceptance, you know, we need to accept every child where they are? I just, I don't think a curriculum's going to change the culture of some. And I'd like, I'd like a culture of respect and acceptance embedded.
Right, in this district.
In our district.
And it starts with the professionals.
Right.
Yeah.
I continue. In all three of the staff meetings that I've talked to so far, obviously, communication is incredibly important to me, and exemplifying effective communication and teaching children effective communication, teaching them how to be, how to argue their point without being argumentative, and how to disagree without being disagreeable, and all of those kinds of things are incredibly important on this. But I also share with them that modeling that behavior is just as important as actually exemplifying it and teaching it in the classroom. So I completely agree. I'm not certain it's a curriculum that we need either. I love the idea of, I mean, perhaps we have even some of our wonderful staff in this district that are working on continuing education. Maybe they're even researching things like this. I mean, I would love for us to call upon our resources. We have some brilliant people in this district, and I feel like even those that have taught from outside of the district who've come in, and maybe they've used resources elsewhere. I just ask that if people have ideas, they've developed one or two things here or there, similar to like the Youth Philanthropy and Action Curriculum that we've brought in, teaching how to develop your passions and things like that. I mean, there may be things like that, one-off things that people in our district have even developed that they haven't necessarily shared. So I'm not certain that it is a full-fledged curriculum, a whole semester to full-year-long approach, if we don't have to do that.
Culture and curriculum are also two different things. And, you know, in order to build a culture, what I hear from the trenches is that having a curriculum can be helpful because it becomes like a map to follow. What makes me a little bit uncomfortable is that, like many curriculums, they have their good parts, and then they have their questionable parts. And some teachers have the savvy and the experience to glide over the questionable parts. But we have a lot of new teachers. We have a lot of inexperienced people. And, you know, whatever we provide, I feel like needs to be vetted and approved so that you use the whole thing, or not. But culture is everything, and a program is, just helps support that. So it's an interesting dilemma, because it was very clear in the Marjorie Stonemans Douglas report that some type of direct instruction in tier-one social skills and being able to help kids de-escalate, you know, without going into crisis, and that type of thing can happen in a regular ed classroom. It can happen in a self-contained special needs classroom. So this could end up being a little bit of a longer process, sort of like the Canvas contract. But in the end, hopefully, what we come up with will be something that feels really solid. I know from hearing from the trenches that there are schools that are really missing Sanford-Harmony, that the kids responded well to it. There's elements of it that are apparently have been incredibly beneficial, and they are missing it. So I think it's really going to be, again, important to hear from the folks that are having to do the work.
And I don't disagree with that, Mrs. Strohler. But again, even if we are required to have some type of curriculum, I think we need to be careful about what that is. But I also think that we need to provide the professional development that goes beyond that curriculum. And so that's, you know, that's where I am.
Right. And we can talk about that part during our workshop.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that that'll be an important thing to discuss, because it really is the foundation of where we're trying to go as we move into becoming an aid district. It's all connected, you know, the academics and the attitudes and believing that you're in school for a reason and that there's relevancy. So I would encourage you, anyone that can get down and review the curriculum or look at it online, because again, we did pull Sanford-Harmony, so we need to be active in this conversation.
Absolutely.
In the end, we'll be approving whatever's done. So I think we all have had a chance to give our input and talk it over. So it sounds to me like the conversation will be continuing as part of our upcoming workshop. Okay? And thank you to Amanda Steckman and her team for the work done so far, and the committee. It's a work in progress, and I have no doubt that we'll get there. So those are all of my comments for tonight, and we have some reminders here. Oh, you had one more thing.
No, I was going to congratulate Megan Magamal. I meant to do that. Megan Magamal, who is our Tech Doc and Children Coordinator, who did win the SUNSPRA Communicator Award. So congratulations, Megan.
Yes, absolutely. Congratulations, Megan. All right. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is actually scheduled for January 7th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. So this is our swan song for public work sessions. The purpose of the work session is to discuss 2021-2022 instructional calendar review, one of two, annual reports by charter schools, redistricting schools, attendance boundaries, construction projects update, and student crime watch programs. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 21st, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of this work session is to discuss 2021-2022 instructional calendar review, two of two if needed, social-emotional learning curriculum, and security site license agreement. Moving forward to student disciplinary matters. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, do we have any?
No, we do not have any parents to speak this evening.
So I skip down to 26.1.
26.1, yes.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 21-003 with educational services for the remainder of the 2020-21 school year?
Amen.
Moved by McCall, second by Cummings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 21-007E with educational services for the remainder of the 2020-21 school year and the first semester of the 2021 and 2021-2022 school year? Moved by Cummings.
Second.
Second by King. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Amen.
Second by Ms. McCall, second by Cummings, and this meeting is adjourned at 7:30 p.m.